Good afternoon. My name is Les Leinbarger, Executive Director of Communications for NACADOTCHUS ISD. This is an agenda review meeting of the NISD Board of Trustees, conducted remotely in the Zoom app because of the ongoing COVID-19 crisis. Today's open session is being recorded and will be shared afterwards on the district's YouTube account. I will now turn this over to NISD Board President Pam Fitch. Ms. Fitch?
Thank you, Mr. Leinbarger. Good afternoon. And I'll hereby call this Agenda Review Meeting of the NACADOTCHUS ISD Board of Trustees by video conference to order. A quorum of the following board members are present. And board members, what I would like you to do, since we're doing this via video, if you would just kind of, as I call your name, indicate that you are present for the meeting. Of course, President Pam Fitch, I'm here. Vice President James Montoya?
I'm here.
Secretary Mindy Winslow?
Here.
Board Member Lea Beth App?
I am present.
Board Member Reverend James Irvin?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Board Member Dr. Tyrell Roman?
Here, present.
And Board Member Farshid Narmon?
Present.
Thank you all. On March 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Kim Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus pandemic. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference. We are meeting by use of Zoom software, which allows two-way communication for members of the public. As we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who have registered to speak during public comment will be given the opportunity to do so. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practical. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. If you have questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787 or by email at t o m a at o a g dot texas dot gov. Today's meeting is a board workshop for discussion purposes only, and no voting will take place. The first item on our agenda is public comment. However, we did not receive any requests to address the board as outlined in our meeting notice. So moving from that, we will move, get my papers organized here, to the consent agenda. Item A is board meeting minutes. If anybody has any questions or comments or corrections to those, please let us know now. Right, hearing none. We're going to go to business office reports, and I'm going to ask Ms. Barbrick to lead us through that.
Good afternoon, President Fitch. Board members, Superintendent Dr. Treheal. I'd like to go over the board amendments with you. Budget Amendment A is budgeting funds for athletic playoff games and its associated expenses. This is not anything new, just as we receive income. We record the income for the facility use and the associated expense. Obviously, this did not occur recently, but these are new deposits that came in. Budget Amendment B is budget funds received from donations for the COVID expense. I will bring to you later on the donation of $10,000, but this is the budget amendment to budget the funds received and the associated expenses. Budget Amendment C, budget funds to increase superintendent budget to cover relocation expenses. His contract calls for relocation expenses to be paid over time, in a one-time payment. So that's what this is. Budget Amendment D is moving funds to cover COVID expenses that did not get covered through the donations. So, as you can see, I've covering many functions, increasing the budgets to cover the COVID expenses if they couldn't be covered already through other savings in those functions. The biggest function that is paying for these these overruns are going to be through student transportation, which we discussed last month, that our fuel costs would go down. Fund 13 is another area that's going to be decreased. We're not having teachers going to conferences. And then in item E is pulling funds from fund balance to cover extra expense and payroll to avoid shortfalls at year-end due to the COVID-19 virus. This is in the student nutrition. That is where we've had our biggest expense. It's still not clear exactly how much we're going to need, so this is an estimate of pulling $100,000 out. Her fund balance is running at about $1 million, so this does not hurt her, and she is aware of this. Any questions on these budget amendments?
I just have a couple of questions on the donation, the COVID expenses. You said a donation of $10,000. Where does that come from?
I will go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Mr. Montoya will actually be discussing that a little further down on our agenda.
Okay, okay, okay. Then I'm good.
Any other questions?
I have one question, just for my own information. Have we served any money on electricity?
You know what, I can't answer that. I can get that for you at a later date.
I was just concerned if that would help us with other expenses.
You know what, I don't know if the electricity has been shut off at the different campuses. I sort of doubt it because we still have employees working to a degree.
Thank you.
Ms. Barbrick, if I can ask, I know there's quite a bit here of expenses that we're talking about due to COVID. Can you give us just an idea of unexpected types of expenses that are being covered with this amendment?
It is mostly payroll. Most, I would say 90% is payroll. We have some other expenses we received or incurred, our masks and gloves, a lot of cleaning equipment, special cleaning equipment to disinfect our classrooms and other working areas. So that's, but mostly salaries.
Any additional questions on the budget amendments before she moves to the next item? Hearing none, Ms. Barbrick will move to the donations.
This next item is for donations under $2,500, and you have the list there. We received $500 from the East Texas Professional Credit Union. That was for the high school, and then Regay received a $2,000 donation for technology from Walmart, and the remainder were non-cash donations. Any questions on those?
All right, we'll move to the investment report.
The investment report. So our investments are not doing as well as they have been recently due to interest rates dropping. This is also the time of year where we need to pull money from our investments back into the general fund to cover expenses because our big tax, property tax elections have slowed down. I also, as our certificates of deposits, as they are maturing, at this time, I am pulling the money back because I don't want to commit funds over a longer period of time at such a low interest rate. So you will see we had a withdrawal there. Any questions on the investments?
All right, hearing none, we'll move to before the miscellaneous business office reports.
I will just entertain any questions you may have over any of those items.
All right, guys, hearing none. Last call. All right, we'll move to item C, which are purchases over $25,000. Item one is proclamation 2020 for high school English Language Arts Reading and ESL Instructional Materials. Dr. Hill?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, President Fitch, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Treheal. So this is one of our years where we are having new Texas essential knowledge and skills or our standards come into play at the high school that will be implemented for the 2021 school year. And so this was our opportunity to look for adoptions. And so the first one that I'm bringing to you is from McGraw-Hill, and it covers our nine through 12 English 1, 2, 3, and 4 classes, our regular strands, if you will. And that purchase is $205,788.86. Ms. Shepherd and myself have been working very closely with Ms. Tucker at the high school, as well as all of the teachers at the high school, to narrow this down to the persecutor company. The other one, the other quote that you see here, just because it's from McGraw-Hill, even though it's not over $25,000, I wanted to go ahead and include it, is this proclamation also includes journalism books. And so that purchase is $2,846.
Any questions for Dr. Hill?
Dr. Roman, I have a question. Many of the books that we're going to be talking about today are digital format, but the way I see it, or the best I understand, is the journalism books are really books. That's correct?
Yes, sir, that is.
They're not, they're not digital.
They are, they're not digital, and I think that's a wonderful question that I can take back to the publisher because our English books are digital, and to see if that digital version does in fact apply.
Correct. It would be good for us to know because even if we just paid a little more, because we want to make sure and have these available, but we would like to have it where it's available to where if we, for worst-case scenario, they can't walk away with the books to their homes with all the different classes. So it would be good to know about that before next year. So thank you for checking into that.
Absolutely, absolutely. And sometimes, sir, the way they put them on the quote is different, but I will absolutely double-check and make sure that we do have the digital versions. Yes, sir.
Okay, while we're here, I have another question, Dr. Roman. There is, there are shipping and handling charges on all the things. There's shipping and handing on digital products? Okay, is that, that's a yes?
There shouldn't be, and I'm reading the same box that you are regarding the comments. And that's new this year where TEA is going to reimburse us for the shipping.
Right, well, I wanted to make sure. If we're paying shipping and handling, let's put it on TEA.
Absolutely, yes, sir. And that's new this year. We're pleased about that.
Yes, I love it because I was pretty amazed at what it cost, but we moved like a ton or two tons of books last year, and then I looked at the, it was a couple of thousand dollars, and I went, but well, if you're moving a ton of stuff, that's really reasonable, you know, for all the handling, so, and handling safely. So good, thank you for making sure that TEA gets to pay for shipping and handling or whatever.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? I have one real quick, Dr. Hill. I noticed on the same paperwork, just to confirm that I'm interpreting it correctly. Since it is a digital version, you have to realize I'm more familiar with the college industry than the public elementary industry or high school industry. If I'm reading this correctly, when you purchase this, you have access to this digital version for eight years, correct? It's not a one-time use and it's gone?
That's correct. This is an eight-year adoption, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
That's really good.
How do teachers, do teachers like the digital version versus having to issue the textbook and get them back and all that?
I think probably it's mixed on whether they like the digital version. However, with all of us moving through the virtual world, we may think differently, you know, moving forward into next year. It's forcing all of us out of our comfort zone.
Absolutely.
Depends on your students, too.
Oh, great point. Yes, ma'am. Absolutely, absolutely.
Are there any other questions? Right, hearing none, we'll move to item C2, proclamation 2020 for high school English Language Arts Reading and ESL Instructional Materials from Bedford-Freeman and Worth High School Publishers.
Yes, ma'am. And so this covers the same subjects, if you will. This is just for our advanced placement and our pre-advanced placement of English 1, 2, 3, and 4 courses.
Any questions related to this one? Are these digital as well?
I believe they are, but I don't want to just tell you a lie, so I will double-check. But I believe that for the most part, all of them are, but let me just double-check and make sure. I can't admit that we would have gone just with hardback.
Right.
Dr. Hill, just
six use online there in parentheses, which makes you think that it's digital, too.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And I know there's a flash drive that's mentioned as well.
Yeah.
In the narrative. Yes, sir, Dr. Roman.
Okay, I don't know which set of textbooks, because there's multiple, but there's one where it looked like there were textbooks, but the teacher's edition was digital. If there is just a teacher's edition digital, can the teacher send out her digital to the students without breaking any copyright laws? Do you understand my question? There's a, there are, there are hardbound textbooks in some of these that I looked at, but the teacher's copy, the teacher's edition, was digital. Can the teacher take portions like chapter one and send it to all the students but without breaking copyright, since we own the books? So I want to make sure we don't infringe on copyright, but that we can utilize, if it's a digital, that the teacher has, we know in advance that's okay to do that, or we can get permission or whatever. It's a broad question, but if you go through this, there is one of them that is, there are hard copy books, but the teacher's edition is digital. That's, whoever that is, that's the one I was looking at.
Of course, we'll make sure that we comply with all copyright rules. I guess I'm curious, why would a teacher want to send the teacher editions to the students?
In case that we didn't have school like next year in, on the fiscal location. Like now, we're digital, we're virtual. If, we've got textbooks of the material, the teacher has virtual material, but how can she get them to them legally? So if that, if we have textbooks, does that change things with the copyright from the publisher? We have to get that written or get that straightened with the publisher so that we would cover worst-case scenario for next year, if you understand what I'm talking about. If we're all in school, we have no problem, but if something happens, there's another round of COVID in the fall, and we say we we are cut out, and I'm good to know it now.
Sure. And I'm so sorry, my internet is unstable, and so I missed a lot of that. But yes, sir, I think the gist was, we just need to make sure that we have digital copies in the hands of our students, especially in an extended outage. Yes, sir.
Correct, correct.
Dr. Hill?
Sir.
Am I correct, if in a teacher's edition book, there are some information which is specifically for teachers and not to be shared with students?
Yes, sir. That's where I was a little confused because I wanted to make sure that in our teacher's edition, normally if there's questions to test or answers at the end of the chapter, we may not want to publish that for the students, but we just want to ensure that they either have access to a digital version of a student edition textbook, and maybe not a teacher.
Right. Well, what I'm referring to that is called, it's called cut and paste, where the teacher can cut and paste the textbook part, not the teacher part. Okay, that would be, that would be included in my question. Either we have a student version for them, or we can cut and paste the teacher's version, just the material that the students would have access, not teacher version.
Yes, sir. I thank you for clarifying that, sir.
Okay.
President Fitch, if I may add, what we may do is, Dr. Hill, let's just look at, looking at the student version. There's a lot of, and see what that, we're doing that with another one as well. There's so many ancillary materials and resources that come with that that we want to make sure that we can provide that for our students as well. So we're, I think we're doing that with a previous one. So let's see what that, what that digital version, if we're not getting it, see what that would run. I see what, I see what Dr. G's saying, but I would really don't want to sell our kids short if there's resources, ancillary materials that go along with the instruction. So I think it would be, it would behoove us to investigate that a little bit, just so the board can be informed on what that may run us.
Sure.
Thank you, President Fitch.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Any additional questions before we move on? Right, hearing none, we'll go move to item C3, Universal Handwriting Elementary Pre-K Through 5 Handwriting Instructional Materials. Dr. Hill?
Hi, so thank you again. So Universal Handwriting is a publishing company that we did a pilot with our pre-K students this past year. And so we used two different publishers to cover our new texts for K through 8. Handwriting is supposed to be taught beginning at grade K all the way through grade 5. And of course, second, second grade begins with our cursive or manuscript, if you will. And so we did a small little pilot with our pre-K teachers this past spring. It wasn't much of a pilot. It was only in their hands for about four weeks. But I met with the elementary principals a couple of weeks ago, and we decided to go with Universal Publishing because it had both English and Spanish materials, beginning at pre-K all the way through grade 5.
Excellent. Any questions on this item? Hearing none, we'll move to item D, which is Professional Development Waivers to TEA for the 2020-2021 school year. Dr. Hill?
Thank you very much, again, President Fitch. So this is a waiver that we have asked for for the past couple of years. And so for our existing 2021 school year calendar, we have four built-in professional development waivers. Those are on October 13th, November 30th, January 14th, February 15th. And so by seeking this waiver from TEA, we're asking for four staff development waivers. And those four days would count towards our, you know, expected minutes of 75,600 instructional minutes.
Dr. Hill, how will that be affected? In fact, we have, you know, the pandemic causes us not to be able to go to school when we need to be, and how's that gonna, how are we gonna get around that?
So, and I don't, I don't know the answer to your question directly right now because we're just in charter territory, and we continue to receive daily updates from TEA. Just received some additional documentation over the weekend regarding our 2021 school calendar. And I know we have a cabinet meeting in the morning to discuss that. So unfortunately, right now, I just don't have a 100% solid answer for you. And I would think that if that were to happen, that TEA would provide us with guidance on what we needed to do at that point.
Thank you. I fully understand.
Dr. Hill, I might ask, this is, this is Pam Fitch?
Yes, ma'am.
Are these, are these dates already accounted for on the calendar as we adopted earlier this year?
Yes, ma'am, they are. They are. And I should have brought it in, and it was just
This is just kind of the paperwork end of it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to item 3E, Allotment Antiques Certification for 2020-2021. Dr. Hill?
I thank you again, President Fitch. This is an annual approval that we do, and it just basically lets, IMA, which is our instructional materials allotment, it used to be the old textbook funds. They brought it into IMA funds where we purchase our textbooks and some other things out of. Anyway, this is just saying that the meeting that we purchased with IMA will be aligned to the Texas State standards.
Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move to item 3F, Instructional Materials Inventory Refarment Waiver. Dr. Hill?
Hi, this is the last one. Thank you all very much for your patience. As a result of COVID and our school closure, we are required to do an end-of-the-year inventory regarding our instructional materials, things that we approved. Unfortunately, we were not able to do that, and so this is a new waiver that TEA has put out only for this school year because of this pandemic that allows us, that basically just says we didn't complete the effort. So what this looks like to me when we return back is getting with our textbook coordinator, Robert Vaughn, and working with him and working with the campus textbook coordinator to really find out if we had any losses. I know the campuses are working beginning last week through the remainder of the school year to either receive items from students, including instructional materials and/or returning personal items. So once all of that is followed, then Robert and I will get together to determine what we're missing.
Any questions? I might add one to that, Dr. Hill, if you don't mind. I know this is going to be a particularly challenging year because of the pandemic trying to recover those instructional materials. What, what happens when a student, and let's say an elementary student or middle school student doesn't return a textbook? What's the process for that? What happens?
I believe there is a fine that is assessed, but I do know that we have, please don't quote me on this, but I know we have to, you know, if they transfer out of our district, then we have to send the records. I think we do our due diligence in making sure that, whether it's a library fine or a textbook fine, that we acquire that money from them, but I do know we have to
And what happens if it's a, I mean, textbooks are hugely expensive, so I mean, what, what happens when it's a family that afford to pay that reimbursement?
So I'm sorry, my internet was unstable again. I think, I think I understood your question.
Yeah, what happens if it is a family who cannot afford to reimburse the cost of that textbook?
I don't know 100%. A lot of that is dealt with on the campuses, but I would like to think that they are held harmless and that we absorb the cost because that's, that's in essence why the instructional materials allotment money is available to us. And I know every year, there is a percentage of loss. It's not great by any means, where we are replenishing textbooks so that the teachers and students have what they need for the And I know every year, there, there is a percentage of loss. It's not great by any means, where we are replenishing textbooks, so that the teachers and students have what they need for the summer.
Any additional questions? All right, we'll move on then to item 3G, which is Special Education Physical Support Performance Contract with ESC 20. Dr. Young, are you with us?
I am. I show up as iPhone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Superintendent Trujillo, President Fitch, board members. For Dr. Trujillo, I'm Dr. Audrey Young, Director of Student Support Services. I had the opportunity to apply for a grant totaling $63,000 we have received for our district. The grant funds are front, yay, front-loaded, so the money has actually already been received. We'll be able to utilize those funds for compensatory services, as well as for providing, being able to hire even our own staff during summer off-contract hours to complete evaluations and other therapies and necessary, you know, issues with special education in order to try to catch us up before the start of the next school year. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Dr. Young, you said services for the coming year. Will you be able to utilize some of those funds for our specialized students that have been gone since the pandemic, that might be having some issues coming back into the school here throughout the summer, or do you have to wait until you come back to school?
That, we're, as, as soon as the governor allows for open campuses, we already have plans in place for therapies to continue. We, we've pre-designed occupational therapy, physical therapy camps, speech therapy camps, to, to bring the students face-to-face and, and, and sort of catch up all their services, as well as get them ready for the next school year. Yes, sir.
Now, given that, if the pandemic wasn't allowing us to get back to the school during the school year, do you have an alternate plan to utilize those? Or you utilize those, those funds, even though they may not be in school?
Yes, sir. So, we have the option of being able to utilize those funds to, to, for those compensatory services. It, it does depend on what the school district designs as our school year. So, when we move forward, what those therapy camp, and counseling and evaluation services will look like. But we could continue to use those outside the contract times for our, our therapists and our diagnosticians, LSSPs.
Thank you.
Dr. Young, this is Dr. Roman.
Hi.
I want to thank you for the extra effort on your part and all the people that work with you for this special group of students. And thank you for what will be accomplished through those efforts. We really appreciate that hard work.
Absolutely. I, and I appreciate the compliment. We, we've continued to work diligently during this time. I know that Lisa, one of the questions earlier was, what's been an increase in what the expenses have been? I can tell you that special education has spent $8,000 on postage. You see that in your list. I also wanted to just address real quick your question as to what do we do when we have a loss of books? The principals are very proactive in, in asking the social workers to do home visits to, to collect any items that belong to the campus as well. So, so in addition to, you know, just reaching out to families, we also try to go to their homes and, and help them, you know, and that includes collecting library books and, and school books. We do that as well.
That's wonderful. Well, Dr. Young, I would like to reiterate Dr. Roman's comments and just say, thank you so much for, for being proactive and seeking out this, these grant monies to bring home to Nacogdoches to help our students. I applaud your efforts. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. If y'all have any additional questions, please feel free to ask. Thank you.
Hearing no other questions, we'll move to item 3H, which is the Southeast Texas Cooperative Purchasing Organization Resolution and Letter of Commitment. Mrs. Thacker, how are you today?
I'm wonderful. How are you today? So, good afternoon, President Fitch, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Trujillo. I bring this to y'all, because since we've been in COVID-19, we've, we've discovered that we have things that we need that may not be on bids. So, we're just adding another, another level of vendors that we can use and participate to use, so we can hopefully get some stuff that maybe one of our vendors don't, don't have in stock or whatever. So, I just want to be proactive.
Any questions for Mrs. Thacker?
I don't have any questions. I just would like to make a comment about your diligence by you and your staff to ensure our kids are getting fed in our community and, and families, and obvious by the notes that they've left you on the sidewalks and stuff. I think you guys are awesome, and you're a big part of our district, and thanks for your work. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. My, I have a great crew. I can't do anything without my crew, and my crew has been wonderful. I think I have one quick question for you. I did not see it in the documentation that we reviewed. Is, is there a cost associated in this co-op? For the 20, for the 20, 20, for the 19-20 school year, it will not, there is not a cost to it. When we renew in 2020, for 2021, because it will not renew until October, there may be a cost, and it will be $600 if there is a cost. But they haven't decided what kind of cost it will be.
At that point, we might not need it. That's kind of what, it might be on the other side of this.
Well, that I wouldn't know, because it would just allows us to have, because they have another set of different things. It's not just things that, but they also have other things. Part of this is we join like Region 7. It's, it's with Region 5, so it may be worth our while to have, just to have an extra set of vendors. I think. Absolutely. I'm all about saving that money. And we appreciate that. Are there any additional questions? All right, hearing none, we'll move to item 4 on our agenda, which is Discussion and Action Items for Thursday. 4A are donations over 200, or $2,500. Mrs. Barber?
Thank you. So, we received a donation of $10,000 specifically for COVID-19 aid, and this came from the J. Donald and Laura Lee, Laurel Lee Family Foundation. Dr. Trujillo and I went to Lee Containers off of University, and they just felt the need to, to give us assistance, because they knew that we were having extra expenses due to the COVID-19 virus. And so, they were very generous in giving us this donation.
What a wonderful community partner.
Yeah.
That answered my question.
Yes. Is Holly with us? Can you hear me, Holly?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. If, if you would, I would love to prepare a, a special thank you letter from the board to Mr. and Mrs. the, the Lee Family Foundation. If you could prepare that for each of the board members to sign, I would be, or we would be ever so appreciative.
I'll be happy to.
Thank you. That takes us to item 4B, Consideration of Adoption of Revised Board Operating Procedures, and that falls under me. I hope you've all had a chance to, to download and, and review those. A couple of comments I'll make. The first is, this is, this is something we would, we like to revisit annually, just to remind ourselves what our commitment and our pledge is on how we as a board are going to operate with one another and function. And in doing so, when I was visiting with Holly, she said, wait, remember now, we need to update the public comment portion to reflect the new laws that were adopted last year with that. So, what we did on page 7, 8, and 9 of that dotted and approved, and basically overlaid that into our operating procedures here. So, it is identical to what our policy says. The other note that I would make here is, on page 4, it talks about our student outcome goals and goal progress measures. We developed those back in 2016, so we're coming close to the end of those five-year strategies. I have visited with Dr. Trujillo, and we will be planning down the road. We want to give him some time to get his, his feet on the ground and get his bearings. So, at least six months down the road from that, we will come back together to revisit and set some new outcome goals and progress measures for our district. So, look for that to be updated, hopefully, before the end of the next school year. Are there any comments or questions or discussion on this document at this time? Have you all had a chance to read it? I'm not hearing anybody say no. So, that's a good, that's a good thing. All right. Well, if you do have any questions, comments, concerns, or anything like that before Thursday, just, just let us know. And we'll move through that. We have an executive session on the agenda. However, we are not going to break into executive session today. We will save that and do that on Thursday before we open into our action meeting Thursday evening.
I have one.
All right, with that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
For we, we made 4B to consent, or did we want to talk about it Thursday?
It's a great question. Thank you, Mrs. Winslow. How do you guys feel? Would you like to see that on consent or stay on action?
I didn't get, I didn't hear what you said, Mindy. What did you say?
Yeah, but item 4B, did we want to move back to consent? Okay, I'll hear me on that one.
This is Coach Farshid. I said we should, but it would be helpful.
Right, sounds like we have a consensus there. So, Holly, if you would move item 4B up to the consent agenda for Thursday.
I will do that.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Not hearing anything else. That takes us to item 7 on our agenda, adjournment. So, I will entertain a motion.
Here's Mindy. Go ahead.
We adjourn. Sorry about that. I was scrolling.
Right, we have a motion from Mrs. Winslow. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Montoya. So, we have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any, it's slow on that internet. Any opposed? Right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you all so much, and we will see you Thursday.
Thank you.
Everybody, be safe.